Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City Council of Rancho Mirage. Our regular meeting Thursday, November 17, 2022. And it is 1:00. And we are representing the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Development Successor Agency. Regular meeting, and again Thursday, November 17, 2022. And we are now in session. With that, we're going to do the flag salute. And Mr. Quintanilla, would you please honor us?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Moving forward, we're going to do roll call. Chrissy?
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kite?
Here.
Mayor Townsend?
I am here. Next, we're going into presentations. And we are having a presentation by outgoing Sheriff's Lieutenant Meyer and introducing of incoming Sheriff's Lieutenant Espinoza. So I'm going to turn this over to Sean Myers. And here he comes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City staff. It's kind of another bittersweet moment. Months ago, you welcomed me back, and I was happy to be back. And I thought the next time I would be before you was when I was going to retire.
Are you that fickle? What happened?
So, you know, life has no guarantees.
I guess not.
What I'm seeing here. So I've been tasked to take over our aviation division, which was effective today. And I'll be moving on to that. I will still be able to provide services to the city of Rancho Mirage by way of the air assets we have. So I'll still be around. I'll be splitting my time between here and Hement Airport, which is where we have another facility. So with that said, I thank you guys again for being a great partner and always taking care of us here on the law enforcement side. And without further ado, I would like to introduce your new incoming lieutenant, Rick Espinoza. He's a tenured employee with a vast amount of experience. He's coming from running our patrol operations division. And previous to that, he was supervisor at our homicide unit. So he has, he's a great resource. And I'll let him take the mic and introduce himself. Thank you guys again.
Good afternoon. Thank you. It's an honor to be here and to work with all of you. Thank you. And I look forward just to working with everyone here and serving the people of Rancho Mirage the best I can.
I'm sure you'll do a fabulous job. You've got big shoes, though, to fill for this one over there.
Yeah, I know.
Because he changes jobs like every, you know, few months. So.
He's going for that, yeah.
Congratulations. And if you'd like to say anything on the council?
Yes, Lieutenant, we welcome you. I know that you were here earlier in your career. And so we welcome you back. And I've said to you before, we've had a personal conversation, how we feel about law enforcement in Rancho Mirage. So we just can't be more pleased with the services that you provide. And we look forward to your leadership. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. And I look forward to working with you guys again. It's a great city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then next, moving on, we have, I'm going to introduce Anne Dunsmore. And Anne is here before, and we brought her back to do more. And Anne is going to talk to us about
I don't know if they're legal, but
the founder of the preservation of the angels.
Okay. We've made great progress. I really appreciate you inviting me back. We have our little challenge coins to remind people of the valor that it takes to serve and the honor that one has in exchanging challenge coins. We've accomplished a great deal just today alone. We've received interest in a $5 million grant to expand on our efforts to raise awareness. Again, I want to remind everybody that we want the greater Palm Springs area to serve as the location for the annual, and only that I know of in the nation, Stop Suicide and Summit, solely focused on veterans' suicide. We convene scientists, we convene, we convene scientists, researchers, clinicians, veteran service organizers, family members, none of whom know what the other is doing, that the families don't know, and the veterans don't know that there's hope on the discovery horizon in science. There's a program that you can download into your iWatch that will disrupt a nightmare but not disrupt your sleep. Very simple, non-invasive, non-addictive therapies and treatments for PTS and TBI. There are no therapeutics, I'm sorry, there are no FDA-approved diagnostics for TBI as of yet. So we've got a long road ahead of us. But awareness, public pressure produces action. And I believe that that action starts at the municipal level and with governance groups such as yourselves. So with that, how do I start the, okay. So in pulling together this summit, which is from the 5th to the 7th, we decided to go gritty. Nothing easy about the issue, nothing easy about the, nothing easy about the solutions. Angel Force's sole mission is to raise awareness. We do not clutter our mission with anything else. We don't deliver clinical care, but we raise awareness for those who do. One of the biggest obstacles for especially community organizations that support veterans is that nobody knows it's a problem. We created a word called "suicide silence." Our goal is to stop suicide silence, which is the avoidance of discussion about suicide. If you are to discuss veterans' wellness, that has to be the main issue. It has killed, we'll move on to this, over 30,000 military personnel and veterans since just 9/11 as compared to 7,000 who were lost in combat. Some general statistics. One U.S. citizen dies every 40 seconds by suicide, by their own hand. It is the second-leading cause of death in America. We intend to stop that, slow it down, and bring it to a screeching halt, hopefully in my lifetime. Female vets die by suicide two and a half times more than male veterans, six times that of their civilian counterparts. One suicide impacts 135 people. That's before you get to the cascading effect it has in subsequent generations. Again, we have not started compiling statistics on suicide in the military community until after 9/11. So the longest longitudinal studies you will find are only 12 years old. We're only just beginning. This is a list of the people who have come together for our events in December 5 through the 7. In my journey on this summit, I've found that the strength, and I will continue to believe that the strength of this effort to stop suicide silence is going to start at the local level. And I'll get you the air cover from up above, but that is a slow and tragic group of legislators up there. So I believe the public pressure is going to start here and start now. You'll see that I've gotten the names of people in Orange County as well, and I hope to add more from San Bernardino and the greater inland empire, if you will. These are some of our partners and panelists so far. We've added, I think, since I was here, I think we've added the American Legion. And we have more coming onboard. And I'll go over the actual, give you a sample of what the symposiums and the different events will comprise, be comprised of. This is our schedule. On Monday, we invite our participants, which would include you, and our panelists, and our VIP table sponsors and other VIPs. We do have a Medal of Honor recipient that will be joining us for the entire conference along with several other people of his stature. On Tuesday is our first symposium. I cannot begin to tell you how important it is for anyone in your governance structure to attend these symposiums. The first day is the Community Approach, presented by organizations who have a long history of success in serving their communities of veterans locally. So instead of the road, which most of us have to travel in this particular, on this particular topic, where you have to do it by trial and error, you're going to have a wealth of information to draw from, from this group right here. American Gold Star Moms on a national level with suicide moms in their ranks. You have the medal recipient. You have canine organizations. You have job-seeking organizations. All of the eight pillars of wellness that are deemed important in solving and addressing this issue. Tuesday afternoon, thanks to you all, we are having a veterans-free concert. And I just want to thank Gabe and Isaiah and everybody who's really making this actually a great project for me. There isn't a thing on this schedule that doesn't terrify me and keep me up at night. That's not one of them. And that's, thank you for that. The veterans-free concert is free to veterans. We're asking the public for $25 contributions if they aren't veterans, but I don't think we're going to be holding anybody hostage at the door for $25 if they're interested in hearing our message. We are marketing that through the American Legion and also a platform called VetTix, which already filters veterans. And they get free tickets that are donated through that platform all over the country. On Wednesday, we have our second symposium. The second symposium is the Discovery Approach to Veterans Suicide. We have quite an interesting group of people speaking, most of whom who have suffered through this firsthand. I will add that in my journey in the last two weeks, I got to know the American Legion, contact for this area, Amato Salinas, thanks to some of you. In speaking to Amato, he finally said to me, "I'm a suicide attempt survivor, and until I spoke to you, I never told anyone." And I said, "Well, the contents of your speech at our summit is now going to be about that because that's going to be the most important thing you can give back to your battle buddies, is letting them know that you have the empathy firsthand." So little victories are very important in this effort. That evening, we have the Never Forget Gala. The gala will always be held in our summits in the desert on the anniversary of Pearl Harbor. So if you ever forget when are we doing the summit, just remember when Pearl Harbor Day is Never Forget. Little history on that. Someone said, "Why are you doing it on that day?" Nobody remembers. And I said, "Well, that's exactly why I'm doing it on that day because we can never forget that day." We will be honoring Sue Groff, a part-time resident out here in the desert. I like to call her Captain Karen Miles. There was General Ken Miles, but there was always also Captain Karen Miles, and she will be one of our recipients. And we will be having this whole effort in the Karen and Ken Miles hangar at the Palm Springs Airport, except for the Rancho Mirage concert. That's it for the schedule. These are some of our participants. They were in the booklets that I gave you. If anybody did not get one at the last meeting, I have some here. We have a description of each of the organizations in there. These are our honorees. One of them is Skunk Baxter, a Rock and Roll Hall of Famer, who is very, very dedicated to our military, actually works with the Pentagon on electronic defense systems. Our band includes members of Crosby, Stills, Nash, Sugar Ray, Bob Dylan, Air Supply, Robbie Krieger Band, The Who, Roger Daltrey, The Rolling Stones, and I could go on. It will be a great evening. By the way, Monday night, we're going to have a jazz trio. You can only have so much rock and roll. And they will be performing Charlie Brown's Christmas songs for a little bit of a break. So here's our tables. What we're doing, we're at about 25 to 30 tables. I got some pretty hefty commitments today, a 50 and a 10. So we're right at our low goal, which is very exciting. So now Iris, I'm happy to tell you, I don't have to say 10 anymore. I can say now I only need to sell five more. But we have to see who's using the tickets. We're going to turn the tickets over, if the table is not being used, to veterans from the local area. These are some of the people who have agreed to hold up signs. We hope you'll be one of them. If you come to the event, you would be the guests of Angel Force. Rod Stewart, Graham Nash. We see Billy Crystal here, not laughing for a rare moment. Ronnie Wood from The Rolling Stones. This is an effort we will continue until it gets to be a pretty bold statement, which ought to be many more pages than this. This is our board. We have some of your residents out here on our board. And we are looking to increase that up to at least 20 as we embark upon our national effort to hit 40 cities a year, which would include visits to bases, creativity workshops, just general release of tension to the tunes of great music, and then also awareness in the donor community. And I believe I kind of crammed that all in, didn't I? Okay, so we do have underwriting levels, and you know, we're getting a little late for that. But I wanted people to get used to the fact that this is what the format will look like every year. We want to make it predictable. And then at the end of the day, we want to make sure people know that there is hope on the horizon and that it's not all darkness. So with that, I'd be happy to take questions.
Very good. Anne, if I may, congratulations. And just as a side note, I'm on the Seveg Homeless Commission. And yesterday Cathedral City announced, and they had their grand opening ribbon cutting for the Veterans Affordable Housing
Wonderful.
Project, which is unbelievable. Took 10 years to put it together. The Cathedral City gave the land, and the developers went from there. And they are also asking that the other eight cities look into trying to do the same thing in all of our communities. So veterans are well up on top
Yep.
here in the Coachella Valley.
We know.
So I appreciate it.
We know. We're very grateful. This is why we thought it would be the most appropriate place in the country to launch this sad but true effort.
Very good. And with that, I turn it over to Iris.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Anne. You did a wonderful presentation. And you know, you headed this organization, and it has become something so important in so many people's lives that we're totally unaware. And for those who don't realize, it is a 501(c)(3).
Yes.
You can go onto the website and look for AngelForceUSA. But I am so honored to be a part of this project. And after I leave the council in a few weeks, I will hopefully be even more involved with Veterans Affairs in general.
We look forward to it. And again, we want to recruit as many people at the local level to be involved. And I got some other city council members that are ready to tear it up too, out in other areas. So it's quite a team. I don't need to say, I think they're all women, but watch out.
Whatever it is, I know all are welcome because this is something that so many are totally unaware of. And when I mentioned, when I spoke at the Veterans Day event at the cemetery, and I mentioned that 22 people take their lives every day. People, their eyes bugged out. They could not believe what they were hearing. And especially when they realized that of that, two and a half times the rate is the taking of lives for women. And it is absolutely frightening. And it's even more concerning that so many people are unaware. So you are out there, you are beating the band, and we all appreciate it. And I'm so glad to be a part of it.
Thank you.
And I know that other cities are chiming in. It was great to see all the names on that list and that you filled so many tables already. It's going to be a fabulous event.
I look forward to it myself. I'm actually very happy today.
I don't blame you.
You caught me at a good moment.
You should be. I know you're on the phone constantly, and you're reaching out to everyone possible. So it's an honor to be a part of this. And I thank you for all your hard work.
My pleasure.
And I thank Isaiah and Gabe for what they are doing also and the fact that we are able to participate by lending our amphitheater. What a gift that we can give. And we're just honored to be a part.
I hope you can all attend. And again, please do, plus one. It's going to be important because there's no playbook. We have to put our minds together to add to the playbook and ideate our way through this. And I look forward to a lot of feedback afterwards.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And now, if you have some.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
And I will say firsthand that Iris is out there working, 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 working.
Good. I can tell.
I know that. Any other comments, anybody? All right. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you very much.
We all do.
Thank you very much.
We are going to go on to our next topic, which is non-agenda public comments, an opportunity for the public to speak on the issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, three minutes per speaker. Chrissy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so now's the time for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. If you are participating remotely, please press star nine on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. Our first speaker is Colleen Davis.
Good afternoon. So I have three issues. One is annoying, and two are serious. So I'm going to give you the annoying one first. I'm a frequent flyer at the library. I absolutely adore the library. The light at the library does not work based on the traffic. You can sit at the light for a good five minutes with nobody coming either way on the 111, and you can't turn. I was told by the library people, I'm one of hundreds of people who have complained. So I filled out the little form with my comments about sync up the light on the 111. I brought it up to the code compliance folks when I called, and it still doesn't work. So I just want to put that out there that we have the writer series going on. It's season. It'd be nice if we got to make a left-hand turn when there's nobody coming. That's my first issue. My second two are safety. The first one is the bridge on the Frank Sinatra. I brought this up before, and I heard it's, we're not looking at it. Meanwhile, Cat City has two brand-new bridges, and we're Rancho Mirage. I live off of Deval. It's an eyesore. There's no place to walk when you want to go up to the 111. There's no sidewalk. There's no path when it rains. There's no way to get to the other side of the street. Needless to say, there's no bike lane. Across from the beautiful Wolfson Park is a piece of land that I understand Rancho Mirage owns. That's the biggest eyesore in our town. It's maintained by conserve. We have the same landscaping company you folks do in our HOA. So I'm familiar with them. They do a wonderful job. They do the community across the street from this vacant lot. I was going to take pictures, but I wasn't too sure how I'd show them to you. But if you ride by, it's filled with weeds. It's filled with mounds of ants. There's litter in it. It's not being maintained. And it's just terrible. So here we have this big community coming, Cotino. They're going to come down Frank Sinatra eventually. So we're going to have more traffic than we currently have right now. If you stand at that light and you push the button because you want to go to the park, there is not a safe place to stand. There's bikes, there's people, there's dogs. There is no place for more than five or six people to wait at that light. There's nobody on the other side that can stand on that corner, which is the HOA, because there isn't a place to stand. So I don't know. You want to build an overpass so that we can get to the park? Do we want to see if we can put a bike lane there? Or does somebody have to get killed first? And I brought this up before. And I know Isaiah said to me that we can't put any more rocks in there and make it nice because we don't want people to sleep there or to hang out there or it to become a homeless camp. But there's a nice park right across the street if the homeless really wanted to get some shade. I, as a homeowner, want to walk down and have Rancho Mirage be beautiful at my end of the community, and it's not. So I beg you to take a look at this bridge. I don't know why we're not fixing it. I saw a bunch of trucks out there the other day before the rain, making sure that we had ample room for the water to go. So we have our own private little waterfall. It's on both sides. It's just terrible. It's terrible to live in such a beautiful place and have an eyesore on a main drag. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
You bring up some very good points.
Yeah, I know, but nobody's listening. So I'm hoping this new council will actually take it serious. Just go there. Just take a walk. Try to walk and not get run over. And my friend and I, we don't know who's got the right of way on the sidewalk. Does the pedestrian have the right of way? Or does the bike? Or does the dog? And when we get our little, when people yell at us to get out of their way, they're on bikes. So at least put a sign up if we do have the right of way. But really, take a look at it. It's an eyesore.
Well, let me tell you, it's a constant conversation and has been, including with me and all of us. And there are issues that prevent some things for now not being done. But what you're saying is not falling on deaf ears, my dear. All right.
I had a fourth one, but I didn't write it down. But I know I got like a half a minute left. The other one is the cable company. And I've brought this up before, too, where every HOA that I am aware of in Rancho Mirage pays a different amount of money for cable and internet. And my husband pays $218 a month. He watches the same show. I can't figure out how to get the bill lower. So if an HOA signs up, they get a preferred rate. I'd like to see the town of Rancho Mirage sign up so that residents can get a preferred rate. And I think we'd probably be the first town in the country to take on the cable company. But we don't have a lot of choices with who we'd like. So maybe we can take a look at that. But I'll take the bridge and the street first.
Very good. You got all four in there. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Chris.
Next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon. I'm Wally Melendez. Good afternoon, City Council of Rancho Mirage. City of Rancho Mirage. We need to think. We're not thinking. We need a hydrogen fuel cell charging station for cars so that we don't burn up so much gasoline and put the fumes out in the air. This body is a government body, just like the county has a government body, just like we live in a state that governs the state. So this body should be in contact not only with your little organizations out here but with the county and the state. The county has, the state has a program called the California Fuel Cell Partnership Organization. And their website is CAFC.org. And their website is CAFC.org. If I was in the government, I would download that website, and I would call them on their number there and tell them, "Look, I think it's a good idea to put a fuel cell station out here so we can protect our air." So think. I asked the city manager just a few minutes ago. I said, "How can we, how can we get this fuel cell station out here?" And he goes, "I have no idea." Well, I got ideas. And we all need to think of ideas. The city needs to put out bids for private companies to bring in or to sell to the city a charging station. Copacetic?
Thank you, Wally, for your comments. Chrissy.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak during non-agenda public comments? Seeing no one, and there is no one on Zoom. So that was the last speaker.
Thank you very much. We will close that portion of the meeting. And I'm going on to council board member comments and reports. Mr. Steve Downs.
Two things to speak to today, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to the voters of this city for granting me the privilege of serving on this council for the next four years. The margin of victory that the voters were kind enough to give to me, coupled with the fact that Meg Marker and Lynn Malato will also be serving on this council next year, sends a clear mandate to this council regarding a couple of, I think, important issues. Number one, Cotino. Cotino is the right project at the right time in the right place for the future of this city. And two is short-term rentals. There will be no short-term rentals in the residential neighborhoods in the city of Rancho Mirage. It is the case that there are some who have suggested that short-term rentals should have been on the ballot. Make no mistake. On Tuesday, November 8, there was a referendum in this city on short-term rentals. And the three candidates who would have done away with the city's ban on short-term rentals finished at the bottom of the vote count. The voters of the city have sent a clear message to this council about short-term rentals. The second item that I wanted to talk about today is in support of Ann Dunsmore and Angel Force. So I came of age during the Vietnam War era. And I had a schoolmate who was a year or two ahead of me through grammar school and high school. He was a good student, a good athlete. He was well-liked. He was an all-around good young man. And after high school, he went off to serve in Vietnam. When he came home, that well-liked, all-around-good young man had transformed into a troubled and brooding soul. And within about a year or so, he was a suicide victim. So we send our young off to defend and protect us. And it seems to me that when they return, maybe it is then our turn to defend and protect them. And one way we can do that is through organizations like Angel Force. And we can support them when they are here in our desert in early December. And we can also support them when they are here at our Rancho Mirage amphitheater. So thank you to Ann Dunsmore for sharing the Angel Force story with us today. I will see her in December. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you much, Mr. Downs. Next, Mr. Kite.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really very pleased to let our residents know that the Rancho Mirage Dog Park reopened on November 14 after a six-week period of closure. This annual closure allows for the annual maintenance and turf reseeding. The city staff efficiently reseated with the winter rye grass and performing other items such as cleansing and maintenance that could not be accomplished when the park was open. Thank you to our public service or our Public Works Department for a job well done. The Canines and the Human Companions have done very pleased review of this situation and have agreed that the Dog Park is one of the best in the valley. Want to thank all the residents for being patient and understanding during this period of closure. The Rancho Mirage Dog Park is located at 34100 Key Largo, off of Dyna Shore. It is open from 6:00 in the morning till 9:00 o'clock at night, seven days a week. So if you have any concerns or questions concerning the item, call the special number we've dedicated. That's 760-770-3224. Take your dog out and have a great time at the Rancho Mirage Dog Park. You will not regret it, and your dog won't either. So look forward to seeing you out there this coming fall. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate that. Ms. Iris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Steve, for mentioning about the Vietnam War and about Ann's work bringing to attention the need for helping the people when they come home for their duty and from the defense that they have given us of our country. I happen to have worn a Vietnam bracelet for almost three years of someone who did not return, Captain Ronald Mayercheck. And unfortunately, he was killed in a plane crash. And his name is up on the wall in the Air Museum with the Vietnam display. If you have a chance, go over and visit all the displays over at the Air Museum. And if you are someone who did wear a bracelet for someone who was in the Vietnam War and you would like to donate that bracelet, please feel free to call the Air Museum. You can get ahold of Dr. Dave Thompson. He is in charge of the display cases. He's in charge of collecting all the bracelets that people would like to donate. Unfortunately, at this time, I'm still not ready to give up my bracelet. So I still wear it. And it is something very touching to all of us. But go to the Air Museum, see what's happening over there. And I can't help thinking that you will have a new appreciation for all those who sacrificed the very most and those who sacrificed the ultimate gift to our country and gave their lives. Thank you so much. And thank you again, Steve, for bringing it up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you served in the service, and we can't thank you enough for the work you did.
Well, I was just thinking back what Steve was saying. Yes, this was the time of the draft. And I was there with it and was drafted into the Army, into the infantry, became a medic in the medical corps during that time. And I remember being there with all these fellows who were taken out of second-year college, first-year college, businesses, marriages. And what happened? I was there to see it. And unfortunately, more than many of my platoon never came back. So I hear you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, want to echo my congratulations to the three people that have basically been elected to the city council. Although the votes have not been certified as yet, they will be in the next few days. But I welcome, of course, our incumbent, Steve Downs, who has been doing a great job since his appointment to the city council, replacing a longtime stalwart, Dana Hobart. And in addition to that, Meg Marker and Lynn Malato, who are here today. We welcome you. We look forward to having you join us up here on the dais in a very short period of time. And as Steve said, what the vote reflects is that the people have voted to maintain a quality of life, a quality of life that's been established by us for the city of Rancho Mirage. Yes, short-term rentals has been eliminated from the standpoint of a short period of time. But keep in mind, we are not eliminating the opportunity for people to lease their homes on a seasonable basis. They can rent their homes for 28 days or longer anytime. We're dealing with short-term rentals that has proved to be disruptive in our communities and has caused a great deal of unrest. I mean, essentially, we're dealing with a, almost a zoning violation of having a commercial opportunity in a residential area. So this particular vote emphasizes a quality of life. And in addition to that, it's a tribute to the people that have now been elected, Steve and Meg and Lynn. And we thank you. And we look forward to your service in a short period of time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Appreciate that. And my comments are very short. Everybody have a very, very happy holiday, Thanksgiving, a safe one. And we certainly hope that you will be here on December 15 for that meeting, when the newly-elected come in and get their crowns and their capes and their adulations. And then when Iris and I will say our goodbyes and go on our next adventure in our lives. So thank you, everybody. That's my comments. Appreciate it.
Charlie, can I make one comment?
Yes, you may.
As the lucky person that gets to be mayor for the upcoming one-year period, I want to certainly welcome the new individuals who have won in a very convincing manner, I think. Meg and Lynn and Steve all did outstanding jobs in running for this office. And I'm really looking forward to the next year, which will dramatically change from what we were doing a year ago. We are going to have some really new thoughts and new direction and look forward to inviting you all to come to our meetings and participate with the rest of the council for an exciting year in the future. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Charlie.
Well, I appreciate that. And I'm glad that you're having a year. However, I only had seven months because we did the change from April to November. So I sacrificed myself to be able to do this transition and to set us on the course of all the other cities and be a part of Sacramento in the elections.
Charlie, I may, there are some of us who might suggest that you managed to cram a year into that, seven months. So you did a good job. Thank you.
I had a lot of fun with it. And thank you. I appreciate it. All right. With that, we're moving on to city manager comments.
Done today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is turning over the city manager to present the consent calendar items and handle public comments. It is all yours, Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have 13 items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. I still see Lieutenant Myers in the back of the room. So if you don't want to approve this one, I'm sure he'd be happy to come up and read every word of the ordinances. Item number two is to approve the November 3, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Item number three through eight, these are our building code updates, which we are required to do, which I will summarize now. Item number three is adoption of ordinance number 1196, second reading, amending chapter 15.02, adopted California and Uniform Codes of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Energy Code, 2022 California Historical Building Code, 2022 California Existing Building Code, and 2022 California Green Building Standards Code. Item number four is to adopt ordinance number 1197, second reading, amending chapter 15.04, California Building Code, 2019 addition of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Building Code. Item number five is adoption of ordinance number 1198, second reading, amending chapter 15.08, California Mechanical Code, 2019 addition, and California Plumbing Code, 2019 addition, and adding chapter 15.06, California Plumbing Code, 2022 addition, to Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Mechanical Code and the 2022 California Plumbing Code. Item number six is adoption of ordinance number 1199, second reading, amending chapter 15.10, California Electrical Code, 2019 addition, of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Electrical Code. Item number seven is the adoption of ordinance number 1200, second reading, amending chapter 1514, California Residential Code, 2019 addition, to Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Residential Code. Item number eight is adoption of ordinance number 1201, second reading, repealing and replacing chapter 15.12, 2019 California Fire Code of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Fire Code. Item number nine is to adopt a joint resolution number 2022, next in order, making findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 as amended by Assembly Bill 361 and authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the city council and affiliated agencies and all other city-affiliated Brown Act bodies in accordance with AB 361 during the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Item number two is to approve amended final track map number 37856, Section 31, Phase 1. Item number 11 is to approve special assistance funds awards to seven qualified nonprofits for a total of $17,500. Item number 12 are to approve contracts. Item number 13 are to approve the demands. And before we go to council comments or questions, if any member of the public wishes to speak on one of these 13 items, now is the time to do so. If you're participating remotely, you would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Chrissy.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this, on the consent calendar? Seeing no one, and there's no one on Zoom.
Very good. I just want to say I was very disappointed that I didn't have to read all this. I was all set. I practiced it and everything. And here, you took it. No, I'm only kidding. He told me, "No, it's not necessary." So here we go. Any council comments?
Just want a brief comment on item number 11, having to do with the SAF funds.
Yeah.
This is something that we do during the year. There were actually $17,000 in the seven SAF awards we're making. Just encourage those individuals who are working with charities under Rancho Mirage. We try and look at all of the opportunities out there and have money available. Even if it's a small amount, it's an area that certainly you can get involved in. And for a long time, And for a long time, Rancho Mirage has been right out there to fund a lot of our local charities.
That's a very good point. And speaking of that, I think it should be read off what they are for and the monies that were there. So Ted?
No, they were read off previously.
Previously already?
Yeah. In other words, down here? Yeah, this is merely a consent to those that were previously discussed here and read off.
Okay, very good. So the recognition was there?
The recognition was there. And one additional thing, Richard, I might add is that the application for any of the grants are on the city website. You can go to the city website, get the application, and fill it out and send it in.
Iris?
Okay. And I also serve on the SAF Committee, the Special Assistance Fund. And although that was read off in the previous meeting, I would like to just mention what it is for those people who didn't have a chance to see it or are new in the audience. There are a number of organizations, and I will just briefly mention their name and the amount that was funded to them. And the first one is Amy's Purpose, and it was funded for $1,750. The next one is Coachella Valley Horse Rescue, and the funding was $1,500. Coachella Valley Volunteers in Medicine, and the grant was $5,000. Dr. Carrion's Foundation, the grant was $2,500. Friends of the Desert Mountain, the fund was $1,000. Safe House of the Desert, we funded them $4,000. And Shea's Warriors, they were funded $1,750. So these are amazing organizations. We review them very carefully. We look at their value, the accomplishments they've made, and we also check out who is also giving to those funds and what the organizations work consists of. And it's our honor to provide funding to them. So thank you. So now those people who didn't see it in the past, now you know exactly what it is. Thank you.
And I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, I will call for a motion, and I will make the motion that the consent calendar be approved as written.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. We are moving along. Oh, could be if I voted. And there we go. Chrissy?
Councilmember Smotrich still waiting for your vote. And motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And number 14 is public hearings, and I'm going to call this to our attention to Coffee Etuban.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. This item is to hold a public hearing on annexation 189 into Community Facilities District Number 1. This is the second and last step in the city's standard process as it relates to annexations into CFD Number 1. The first step was considered and approved by the council on October, at the October 6, 2022 council meeting. So at this point, I would like the aerial of this territory we are talking about to be brought up. Thank you. So the territory proposed for annexation is located at the southwest corner of Ginger Rogers Road and Via Josephina, and it comprises of one parcel totaling approximately 5.04 acres. The project is slated to subdivide a single parcel into four residential parcels. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed and in the absence of a majority protest, the council may adopt the resolution attached to the staff report calling for an election, declaring the results of the special election, determining validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So now is the time to provide any public testimony on this public hearing item. Anyone participating remotely can indicate they'd like to speak by pushing star 9 on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, and no one on Zoom.
Then I will ask the city clerk for the election results.
Thank you. The ballot for the six eligible votes was received on November 4, 2022, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Very good. Now, anybody on the council wish to comment? Anything? All right, then I will call for a motion. Okay, I will make the motion that the city council adopt resolution number 2022, next in order, calling an election on levying the special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number 1. Annexation Number 189 declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing and re-coordinating of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien in connection with tentative parcel map number TPM 38106. Second?
Second.
Very good. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the action calendar, and this is consideration of creating a Vista del Sol road improvement. And I'm turning this over to Ryan Stendell, Public Works Director, to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. While my presentation comes up, staff's here to give this report and receive a bit of direction from the council related to a roadway within the city of Rancho Mirage. For those that may not be familiar with Vista del Sol, bound to the north by Frank Sinatra and on the south by Country Club, east Monterey and west Bob Hope Drive, the approximate one-mile roadway consists largely of large estate residential properties. The eastern ends of the Eisenhower and Betty Ford campuses and some ancillary medical offices as you get closer to Country Club. For a bit of background, in 2008 and '09, the city's former redevelopment agency actually created and in the field survey and street improvement plans, there was a fully bidable and buildable set of drawings. And at the time, staff was looking for consensus from adjacent property owners to actually fund the roadway construction through some form of a Prop 218 tax assessment district. At the time, as I have understood from many of the residents that I've been in contact with, there was not sufficient consensus, and so no construction took place. Since 2009, engineering and planning staff has been requiring half-street improvements as parcels along the roadway are developed. And I want to dive into what that looks like in the field. So in my staff report, I mentioned the intersection of Carrera Drive and Vista del Sol, which is outlined in the oval I've placed up on the screen. What you see here on the west end, the west side of the road, is a street that developed and built its half of the road. The other half of the road would be built when the vacant parcel to the east develops, which leaves us with a bit of a strange configuration in the real world. With a half roadway built, you get about an 18 to 20-foot section of asphalt, which is just safe enough for two-lane travel. But it certainly is not a consistent design, and it leaves users of the roadway a bit confused as they travel up and down. What concerns myself and the city manager and our planning department is as if we continue to rely on development to build the half roadways, we could see a checkerboard pattern of development, which would lead to a roadway that literally moves all over the place. Since it's been about, well, over 10 years since we've had any significant public input in the area, we sent a mailer out in the beginning of November to engage residents, invite them to this meeting, and get them to the table for some response. As of today, I've had responses from about six to 10 residents. The reason for the range is we have one property owner on the street that represents multiple properties, and I believe is in attendance today. The areas of concern that have been communicated to me are traffic and project funding. And if I could speak to each one of these briefly, as I've been speaking with the residents, whether we rely on development to continue to build this road or the city decides the road needs to be built, traffic volumes on Vista del Sol will increase. There are, however, ways that we can create friction for motorists to attempt to slow them down, ways that we've tried in other areas of the city. Sahara Road behind Desert Europeans, one of the areas we've applied some of those treatments, and they work very well. So staff is confident that while we acknowledge and acknowledge in the staff report that traffic volumes will increase on Vista del Sol now and into the future, we believe we can mitigate that through the design of roadway. Project funding, this is the more fun one. Many of the residents on Vista del Sol have owned their properties since before the city incorporated some of them, and they very well remember the process from 2009 and automatically assume that the city is looking for each property owner to levy dollars to build the roadway. And that is not how staff has teed up our report today. As presented to the city council, we believe that the safety concerns on the roadway and the inconsistent design and challenges with maintenance make it a good project for city, the city to invest in public infrastructure. However, I wanted, even though it's printed in the report, I wanted to make sure to state that because that's the, pretty much, the number-one thing that comes out of the resident's mouth when I hear a reply. So we're at a hurdle point, whether or not we want to continue or whether or not we want to continue to work through the development of each parcel. If we do wish to proceed, staff's recommendation is that you direct us to create a capital improvement project for these street improvements and authorize an agreement with MSA Consulting that revises the street improvement plans from 2009. This also does include the street treatments that I was just talking about with regards to thinner lanes, wider bike lanes, where we can attempt to slow traffic. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Ryan. And I see there was great transparency in this, a lot of meetings. So it was something that was coming and discussed several times, I believe, as I remember it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chrissy to go to public comments.
Thank you. So again, if anyone wishing to speak on this item, if you're participating remotely, please press star 9 on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. I have one speaker card. Eddie Kalani?
Ryan made it very clear. Thank you very much. City doing great job for that work as a landowner or multiple lot, maybe I have like seven or six lots in Vista del Sol. We waited for this long time to have that street built. I just have a couple of comments. The city gonna do the street before having the sewer built from Section 31 or after?
Go ahead and ask all your questions, then.
My question is, the city want to do the street improvement. My concern is the sewer and the water before the street because we cannot develop those land unless we have the sewer and the water upgraded. So as far as I know, Section 31 doing the sewer on Vista del Sol, are we gonna do the street before the sewer system? Then Section 31 gonna destroy the sewer again? What about the water? Anybody gonna upgrade the water system or just gonna be as is left for the landowner in the future to do it? And the other thing, there is no assessment district. He made it very clear, so we're not paying for it.
Right.
Right? So my main concern is now, what about the water? Are the city gonna concerned about upgrading the water system and that street so we go forward to subdivide those land and build the area? Or just wait for the landowner to do it for the next 20 years?
In other words, wait for divine intervention? Is that what you're saying?
So what we'll do is, if you go ahead and make your public comment and ask your questions, Ryan's writing them down, and then when everyone's done, then he'll go back through and answer the questions that we got during public comment.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. Any other questions in the council?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Come on up. Please state your name.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm Mark DeBose. I'm one of the residents on Vista del Sol. Lived there about two years now. I do hope the council approves this and moves forward paving the road. We do have, with the addition of Betty Ford, we have more traffic than we had before, and when you add Cotina to it, that's gonna bring even more traffic down the road. It is piecemeal right now, as Ryan mentioned. We also do have people dumping trash on the road because I believe we have the designation as the only public dirt road in Rancho Mirage. So people seem to drive at, you know, 2:00 in the morning and throw off the trash and keep on going. And so I think paving it would help to disencourage that. I do know from, I've talked to, I guess, I see construction crews on the road, the water districts out there. I have been told this piecemeal that they've been doing has led to, I guess, the Betty Ford section of the road sewer line is not large enough. I've been told, at least by the water district, that that line's not large enough for what Cotina's gonna need. So this piecemeal fashion that's been going on is not the most efficient thing to do. So it'd be nice if some organization like the city took it under its wing and made sure it was done right the first time. I do hope, as the previous speaker mentioned, that they do add a little more infrastructure, like we have, our cable speed is a whopping 10 megabytes per second, which is slower than I had in Mississippi by a factor of 10. So I hope public improvements do come out that direction with the internet and other things similar. Hope that stuff is added to the project. But I hope you move forward, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Chrissy? Anybody else out there?
Come on up. Please state your name.
Thanks. So I'm Uthem Kintaksas, and I've lived on Vista del Sol for about four years now. And I've, I actually have lived in Rancho Mirage for 23 years, and I'm an emergency physician and have been there for a while. So, and it's very convenient for me to be this close. But I do, I do echo some of these comments, you know, the piecemeal, I really want the road just because I think it's a, it's a safety issue, and I've seen really some near misses. And I think it is an unsafe kind of pattern. But I do think that we should probably think about infrastructure overall. So, you know, in terms of the sewer, in terms of the water, it's not as big of an issue for me, but I think down the line it will be for a lot of the residents. But I do think, including cable, including power lines, these are all issues that are gonna come up. So if we're really looking at this comprehensively, we should probably look at the whole picture and say, should we do this once and for all? Because with Contino going in, they're gonna need a lot of that infrastructure moving that way. And I think the residents on Vista del Sol have put up with a lot of construction and things, and we've been pretty compliant with all that, knowing it's better for the city in the long run. So maybe it would be a nice thing to think about being a comprehensive issue and not, you know, asphalt's great, but there's all of the other stuff, too. And if it's dug up every three years for a new project, it may not be the greatest thing. So those are my comments, and I really appreciate all of you and your efforts to improve the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Chrissy?
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no one, and we do have one speaker on Zoom, Sharon Villarino? I think you're still muted.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, my name is Sharon Villarino, and I am a homeowner, homeowner on Vista del Sol. And I am for the road, and I echo a lot of the sentiments that have already spoken here. And, but one of my primary concerns, and it has been brought up, and thank you very much, Ryan, for bringing that up, is the idea of obviously increased traffic and then potentially looking for some, maybe some strategies in order to decrease that. But what I haven't heard, too, is there is, people go up there with excessive speed, and that is in on a dirt road at this moment. So not only are we talking about traffic, adding traffic, but I am finding that this, that people are just kind of flying up and down it. So in terms of the safety aspect, not only for those of us who live on that road, but also for the community that uses it for walking, jogging, biking, or taking their dogs up it, as well as it relates to obviously these uneven parcels, and some are developed and some are not developed, that it is a problem. And so I just wanted to speak something to, in order to try to encourage us to, again, I am for the project. I just hope that we can find some potentially traffic calming, speed calming strategies, as well as some, you know, other things that would, that would help really safely improve that area. Thank you very much for your, for your time.
And that is the last speaker.
Very good. That ends our public comments. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to fill any questions in that he can at this time.
Yeah. So as far as project timing, as you've heard, there's several developments, active developments going on in the area that will be making upgrades to the, required upgrades to the sewer system. And we will, there's no way we can be in front of those improvements. So we, we are naturally behind all of the required improvements and developments in the area. So we, we are naturally behind all of the required improvements and developments in the area. That was one of the questions I heard Eddie ask. As far as water, I've spoken directly to the water district. The water district is adequately sized and serving the estate lots that are there today. They had said that they would have to make upgrades if we change densities drastically, but for the Rancho, or for the standard of one acre minimum lot sizes that we have today, the water system is fine. As far as other utilities, we can absolutely spearhead those conversations with the other utility networks. We can offer that while we have the roadway open, they come in and put in infrastructure. The city can also go as far as adding extra conduit underneath those roadways that are fairly inexpensive, and easy task while you're out there. So we can absolutely do what we can, understanding that we don't control those entities. And as far as the, the speed and volumes, yes, I think that that's a major part of the direction that I've received from the city manager, is to make sure that we're looking at the roadway, making sure that we implement what we've learned from other roadways in the area, because we know, we know it's out there. So we'll be doing everything we can. I don't believe I had any other questions that were asked. If there was anything else I missed, please let me know.
Very good. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add something, for the sake of the conversation, since we're talking about utilities, I know in my meetings with some of the property owners, we have certain areas of our city that, you know, developed pre-sum standards. So, now, when a project comes through, they have to underground their distribution lines, right? So, the lines that actually service those properties, in some areas of our city, you'll see the big three transmission lines are still above ground, because they weren't within the original project area of the redevelopment agency, and that is the agency that paid for the undergrounding of the transmission lines. But we do have a few areas in our city where distribution lines are still above ground because of when these properties develop. So what I'd like to do is be able to share my screen, if you can help me out with that, Pablo, and kind of show you what these distributions look like on the north end of Frank Sinatra. And if we're talking about utilities, and, just one second, Pablo, there you go. Go ahead and share that. I would like to wrap into the conversation these distribution lines, because I know that this has been a persistent issue in this area. And we did have an occurrence like this on this same street closer to Country Club, and the city was able to take care of that issue as well, so I would like to take the same approach. So, here we go, let me, so Frank Sinatra, right there, to the north of the screen. How come the Google Street Map view isn't coming up, Pablo? There we go. All right. So let me move my guy down a little bit. So, this is looking down Vista del Sol towards Country Club, so to the south. So again, you can see we have our three transmission lines, not proposing to do anything with those. And when development occurs on those parcels, those will remain there, just like it is for this whole street. But what I'm talking about is this section right here. They don't just have the three distribution lines, they have a whole mess of wires here. These are the distribution lines that service these adjacent parcels here. So, you know, I'm kind of just showing this when we talk about utilities and more than just a roadway. I'd like to spend some city staff time in researching this issue, and seeing if we can come up with a solution with Southern California Edison, and bring that back to the council when we get some more information. Like I said, closer to Country Club on this street, we did have the same occurrence, and we were able to work with Southern California Edison and get those distribution lines underground. But I think this would be another nice step in our community to try to get that mess of distribution lines underground.
Very good. Isaiah Hall, so, can we make sure we clarify that what we're talking about today, for this 162,000, why don't you explain again what that is for, and what we're doing here to move this forward?
Yeah, so, you know, kind of as Ryan stated, it's been many years since we've had this conversation about this roadway, and at the end of the day, it is a roadway, and infrastructure is what cities do. So based on the development that's out there, you know, what we're, we wanted to spark a conversation, both with the neighborhood to get some feedback, and also with the council. And when you do things like that, you know, sometimes you get, you hear from the public about other issues. So, utilities and things like that wasn't a primary topic of the staff report, but I think it's very relevant for this discussion. So, immediately, what we would like to do is recognize some of the safety issues that we have on this public roadway, and just go out with a road project and solve them. Also, at the same time, anytime you're going into the ground, it makes sense to analyze the other services that are in this area. So I think some of those suggestions we heard today with working with the other utilities is a great one that we can wrap into this process. So right now, that wouldn't really probably cost any additional money, but the undergrounding of the distribution lines that I just showed, after working with Southern California Edison, that might have some financial costs to it. But we can always bring that back and not hold up what we're going to try to accomplish overall. And also, if, you know, we are gonna be digging out there, we want to do it once. So let's do it right. So let's see if we can take a look at this holistically, and really try to enhance this area of our city that's been a little ignored for probably too long. So what we're immediately seeking authorization from the council to do is, one, to recognize that we want to start a project out here, a city capital project, and look at the road and some of the other utility issues that we've talked about today. And then, two, the, the immediate monetary request is $162,000 for MSA to update the street plan that was done in '09 to today's standards. And then, you know, as we've heard, and as we've experienced on other streets, not just the volume of traffic will increase if we put this roadway in, but speeds. And so you can design roadways with certain deterrents, and design it a certain way to help those issues. Now, can we 100% eliminate speeding on a residential street? No. But, we can do ourselves some favors in the design. So that 162,000 bucks is to go back to those 2009 plans, update them to today's standards, and then also give them a chance to say, hey, how do we implement some of these traffic calming measures within the design of the street on the front end? And then be able to kind of wrap that together, continue to meet with the neighborhood and update them as we get additional informations, and come back to the council and say, okay, you know, we spent some money, we updated the plans, here's the actual design, and here's the traffic and speed calming measures that we're gonna build into this roadway. And let everybody digest that and have input on it. And then from there, you know, the council approves the design, then we would start to move forward with the next steps. Now this will be a, a public capital project, and so, you know, the, the process is not fast, you know, there's required notifications, there's bidding, you know, sealed bids, public bid openings, all those things, and all these steps are brought back to the council. But essentially, you know, the fact that we did somewhat of a pretty comprehensive set of design plans in 2009 is giving us a big head start. We invested probably, you know, 700, $800,000 into those plans already, which is why it's such a small amount to update them. And then, hey, let's take a look at these traffic and speed calming measures, and see what we can do to help ourselves out with the design of the roadway. So this, you know, is a good starting conversation, but this is just, would be the first step of many, over what would probably be a year-long process to, you know, get to the point that we all want to be.
Very good. And I think when we, we chatted, you said that not doing this, and that leaving a developer come in, and then tear it up and do it his way, then somebody else come in and tear it up. You want to kind of explain what would happen if we did not do this?
Yeah, so, you know, we would be left with the condition that Ryan showed earlier, where right now, as it exists, because of develop, we're required, we're relying on development to build their half-street. And so, there is a current section of this roadway where we have one lane in each direction, because we've had development on both sides of the street. And then, it goes to the next segment, and there's only been development on one side of the street, so you only have one lane. And then it goes back to two lanes, because there's development on both sides, and it goes back to one lane. The other issue that we would encounter if we relied on development is you would never have a completed roadway, right? So take Vista Dunes, the neighboring street, as an example. They put in the street many years ago, and they still don't have full development on Vista Dunes. And so, you know, by allowing developers to put in their half-section of roadway, you could have 15 or 20 years or more separate those segments of the roadway. So, you know, this is a public street, we, we have the obligation to maintain it, and we would be left with a half-section of a roadway in one part of the street being 20-year-old asphalt compared to the other half-section of a roadway that developed much later and is newer asphalt. How do you functionally maintain a roadway like that? You don't maintain roadways by going in and replacing just a half-section of roadway. So by coming in and kind of recognizing, hey, this is a public street, we have enough development here, we have some safety issues here, if we come in and put in the street, then it is one fluid street with a well-thought-out concept, and then we can put it into our street CIP cycle and do the normal things we do for public streets, know how long it is before we need to do crack ceilings, slurry seals, go in and replace roadways, and things like that. So, from an operational standpoint, it's much better for the city as well to be able to just come in and say, hey, this street was done during this period, and we're gonna roll it into this, our street's CIP.
Very good. The, the other thing that I like, what we're talking about, and what you are explaining, is this isn't going to be done overnight, and that there will be conversations and input from the residents who live out there, again, going along to the wonderful transparency that the city of Rancho Mirage works under with its residents when something like this is up. And also, as I'm hearing it, there's not gonna be a shovel in the ground next week ripping anything up, right?
Not on this project.
Very good. I think that kind of, hopefully that answers everybody out there, you know, kind of, you know, puts you all at ease, that you still will have input, and you will know what the city is doing, so. And with that, I'm very proud of this council and our staff. So with that, I'm gonna close that, and I'm gonna go to Richard.
Thank you. On page 15-3, it talks about fiscal impact, $3 million. Does, does that include the projection on all the infrastructure changes, or is this a ballpark figure that we hope will fit the, the project?
Yeah, that's definitely a, an estimate to put in the roadway. So based on design, and based on when we're bidding this, that will be the actual price when we go out to bid. But we wanted to give the council a picture of what would potentially be the total exposure of city funds for this project. So that's meant to give you the total figure.
Okay.
Steve, anything?
Well, I do think it's, it's high time that we did something with this roadway. It's, it's certainly the, I guess it's just about the only dirt road left in the, in the city of any size, so I think it's appropriate to spend the 162,000 dollars to update the plan. It's certainly gonna be some time yet before we start to work, actual work. As you say, Charlie, there're not gonna be shovels in the ground next week, so it'll be plenty of time to do this study. So, I think it will be money well spent to update the study.
Very good. Thank you. Ted?
No, I concur. I've, I've looked at the property for a long time. There's no reason for it to be delayed. And the point is that we've made a sizable investment already in the planning process. And that's the reason, you know, candidly, 162,000, not that it's insignificant, but it's a, a very small amount at this point to get to the next step, so absolutely, we should proceed.
Iris?
I concur completely, yeah. It's nice to be moving on in that direction, and, and have the opportunity to do so and improve that whole area.
It is. And I gotta say about that area, that's a very unique area that you guys live in. And what's good, the development that's gonna go in there is gonna be really aboveboard, and really complement all of your homes, and enhance that fabulous neighborhood, so stay with it, it'll, it'll, it'll happen. Thank you. With that, I will close the council comments, and I'll ask for a motion. Steve?
Sure, I'll go ahead and make the motion, that the city council directs staff to create a capital improvement project for roadway improvements on Vista del Sol Road, and authorize an agreement with MSA Consulting in the amount not to exceed 162,000, to update the previously prepared 2009 street improvement plans.
I'll second that. Vote.
Councilmember Smotrich, would you please try your vote again? Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Very good, very good. Nice discussion. I appreciate all of you coming in, and, and voicing your, your opinions.
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
Is it the city manager's position that we move forward with a subcommittee to work on this with the tenants, or the, the property owners, or is this a staff-directed plan?
Do you think it's necessary this early on in the game?
No, I think it's more necessary after we get past this 164. But it just kind of falls in place after the initial approval.
What do you think?
Staff is fine either way. Our intent was to, you know, kind of each step, come back to the council with, you know, here's the designs, get some input, because in a public meeting that allows the residents that live on the street to come to council meetings, speak to you all directly, and have input during the process, you know, staff will obviously be working with them as well, at the staff level, but if the council desires a subcommittee as well, then staff would welcome that too. So it's totally up to the council.
Very good. Well, if, is, my input would be, as the incoming mayor, Mr. Kite, you could be on that, along with Mr. Downs. How's that? Are, are you saying, is that a yay? A yay? Steve?
Sure.
There you go. You've got it. Very good.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just make one comment, because there was a delay in my voting, because I wanted to clarify with our city manager, because I do live close by that area, and I wanted to make sure that it was okay for me to vote on this, and he assured me that there's no problem. Thank you.
Is she legal, Steve?
Yes, she is.
Well, you're legal. You're legal, Iris. Very good.
Thank you.
So with that, we, we have it all wrapped up, Chrissy, right? Very good. We will close that part of the meeting, and we are moving on to our city attorney to summarize the closed session items. Mr. Q.
Mr. Mayor, the city council is to now recess into closed session pursuant to government code section 5495, 6.9D1 regarding the following pending cases. Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage et al. versus City of Rancho Mirage. Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage versus City of Rancho Mirage. Hometown Colony LLC DBA, the Colony Mobile Home Park versus City of Rancho Mirage. And we also have another pending case where we don't specify the name in the agenda, since disclosure could jeopardize pending settlement negotiations. Finally, the council will be meeting in closed session pursuant to government code section 5495, 6.9D2 regarding anticipated exposure to litigation pursuant to the Brown Act. We are required to state reasons why there is potential litigation, and this particular one is related to a potential challenge against the city's ordinance number 1138, which was adopted in 2018, to preserve the peace and tranquility of the city's residential neighborhoods by regulating certain special events within the city's residential neighborhoods. Those are the items.
Then with that, it is 1:33, and we are now in closed session. All right, it is 3:24, and we are back in session from our closed session, and I will turn it over to Mr. Steve Quintanilla, our attorney.
Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Very good. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.